Good there Penny. Called me in to order. Any items from the public? Come forward and state your name please.
Good morning, members of the council. Vice President Julian. My name is Tracy Cannon. I live in Back Creek Valley in Berkeley County. I wanted to start by updating you all on the Berkeley County Solid Waste Authority meeting last evening. Mountaineer Gas had come to the Berkeley County Solid Waste Authority with a proposal for a compressed natural gas facility. And the Solid Waste Authority voted that proposal down. It's a compressed natural gas facility that would bring trucks to the Grapevine Road Recycling Center. And they voted it down on the basis of traffic issues that could occur. There were about 20 members of the public on the Zoom meeting. And three of us landowners there in person. And we all vote in support of the Berkeley County Solid Waste Authority's decision on that point. I also wanted to inform the council, if you please, of some activities of Mountaineer Gas in the area in the past year. And I actually had maps for you, for you good folks, if I may come to you and distribute them.
Sure.
Here you go sir.
Thank you.
Here you go sir. Mr. Benjamin?
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you all have seen this map before. I did email it to you, but you may not have gotten a chance to get to it. Has anybody of the council seen this already?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so this is the map that Mountaineer Gas presented to the DEP. Showing small segments of a pipeline that that gas company intends to build to complete the gas pipeline to the start of the Route 9 Extension Pipeline that ends at the Rockpool Facility, which currently has no gas source. You can see how there are what seem to be gaps in between the sections of dotted lines on Mountaineer's map. I've watched this work over the past year. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, it says Nannas Landfill Replacement. That section was started in September of last year and completed in March of this year. The quad graphics printing replacement was completed in April of this year. You can see all the different little sections. Are you guys, are you all with me on that? There's a couple of dotted line sections and then there's gaps in between.
Very much familiar.
Okay, thank you. The Needy South VA Replacement is being worked on right now. The Opecan-Stonebridge Lateral Section is being worked on now as well. This is the only section that has a DEP permit. The Salvation Road Replacement has been staked out and cleared. And landowners like my friend Ann Sance here have been informed that the pipeline work would start in June or July of this year. Although June and July have both passed and work has not commenced on that part. Through, for instance, Ms. Sance's property. In one of the gaps, in the 900 block of needy road between Salvation Road and Van Clevesdale Road, there are three property owners that I know personally who are being asked for rights of way or easements by the gas company. This shows that Mountaineer Gas plans to build in this gap. That's not a dotted line on the map you have in front of you. And that gap connects the Salvation Road Replacement piece to the Needy South VA Replacement piece. The gap shown on the map between the Opecan to Stonebridge Lateral Section and the Salvation Road Replacement has been surveyed and staked out. And trees have been cleared. Indicating that work is going to be done this year. Because the tree clearing window is between November and March. They had to clear the trees then, so they did. Which tells me they're going to work on that before the end of the year. Before the next tree clearing window, which is in the wintertime. Mountaineer Gas presents this pipeline project on this map as small sections with many gaps in between, in my opinion, to avoid having to obtain a DEP stormwater permit. If a pipeline project disturbs less than one acre of ground, then no stormwater permit is required for the disturbance. You can see how the pipeline is being presented to the DEP as if it were several tiny pipelines, as opposed to what it really is. A four-mile-long pipeline connecting the Route 9 Extension Pipeline, which ends at the Rockpool Site, to gas mains outside of Martinsburg on Grapevine Road. In my opinion, Mountaineer Gas may be trying to avoid paying the state of West Virginia fees for the proper permit and also misleading the DEP and local government about the scope of their work this year in Berkeley County. I would like to ask if the council would please contact the DEP and let them know what is going on in Berkeley County with Mountaineer Gas. Maybe the DEP could send somebody to look into the scope of Mountaineer Gas's work and make sure that all the proper permits are being filed for and that the Mountaineer Gas Company is not cheating the state of West Virginia.
What makes you think DEP is not aware of that?
They are aware. They are aware, but they may not, they're not on the ground here, they're in Charleston.
No, they're not on the ground here.
Okay. Well, at any rate, they seem to be, what's happened when we've written them letters and emails is that they say it's only small pipelines. But that is certainly not my observation. And I'd like to follow through on that. And ask that you help us follow through. As our representative in this county, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other items from the public?
Good morning, council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you this morning. I really appreciate your time. My name is Ann Sance and I have been a resident of Berkeley County since 2013. I've really loved, I've really grown to love this corner of West Virginia. I am here this morning to echo Tracy's concerns and ensure that you are aware of Mountaineer Gas's activity off Berkeley County. I am also here to show support behind those who are doing their best to safeguard our county and the quality of life that it affords our residents. It is very important to me that any pipeline infrastructure that must be developed is well thought out and overall the process is fair and transparent. It was encouraging last night to see the support for the Berkeley County Solid Waste Authority during last night's meeting. As you heard, citizens rallied behind the authority's decision to say no to the proposed compressed natural gas site at Landfill Drive. Last night, the authority chose to reject Mountaineer Gas's proposal for the compressed natural gas site because it would impact their ability to continue to meet the needs of those who utilize the recycling center and its services. I believe we are at similar crossroads here. As your website states, Berkeley County is a new location for business, leisure, and quality living. I believe all of those three things can and should coexist. Yet currently, I feel that business and profit is being placed over the desires of many citizens. And I will give you a personal example shortly. As you heard from Tracy, natural gas pipeline infrastructure is currently being upgraded across a portion of the county as the map you have in front of you shows. Those who are concerned about this piecemeal construction have not been able to get a clear picture of what overall is the goal of these projects. We are unsure where the natural gas is going. Will it support residents of this county? Or is our county being viewed as one piece of a very complicated and controversial puzzle that reveals a clear prioritization of the industry? The latter is very concerning to me because I do not want to see the natural beauty, clean air, and clean water of this county and surrounding area degraded. That directly affects people's quality of life. As I noted before, I have a personal interest in the upgrading of the natural gas pipeline infrastructure because a portion of the pipeline scheduled to be upgraded travels through the property that my husband and I own. Indeed, this infrastructure is currently being upgraded down the roads from us near Opecan Creek and adjacent to Salvation Road. And we expect construction vehicles and excavators to enter our yard within a few weeks to start digging. We have yet to receive a reliable construction timeline for Mountaineer Gas however, and I have to admit that the overall process has been a bit frustrating. I feel that we are missing key pieces of information that would allow us to feel safe and comfortable with its construction in and adjacent to our property. For example, the pipeline through our yard and parallel to Salvation Road is not even being utilized currently. So why is it being upgraded? For what cause? The uneven and in some cases erratic approach to this infrastructure upgrade does not make me feel confident in the final product of Mountaineer Gas's pipeline. I feel that my safety, my husband's safety, and the safety of those who live near or on the pipeline route could be at stake. This is why I'm requesting your assistance with holding Mountaineer Gas accountable to important principles like fairness and transparency. Citizens should know the larger and true picture of why this upgrade is being done, whom it will benefit, and when those affected can expect construction vehicles in and around properties. Additionally, I respectfully request your support of the citizens who are concerned about not only any additional proposed compressed natural gas site, but also the larger picture of fossil fuel infrastructure in Berkeley County. Residents are and will be directly impacted by these projects and the results of these projects. I hope that our county can make responsible and thoughtful decisions when it comes to fossil fuel infrastructure. I desire that we work together to make the process fair and transparent and that we hold those who seek to inhibit that fair and transparent process accountable. Thank you so much for listening and I really appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you. Any other items from the public? Okay. Move on. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Vice, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Okay. Purchase order. Any questions on the purchase order? Did you have a good vacation? Doesn't look like nobody wants to grill you this morning, so.
Take it easy, honor.
Take it easy, honor. Internal budget revisions?
Yes, sir, I have one internal budget revision request for the council's consideration. The request comes from Eddie Gokenhour, who's the chief of Berkeley Fire Department 711 Emergency Services. Mr. Gokenhour is requesting that he be allowed to decrease Line 341 Supplies Materials by $138. Current unencumbered fund balance is $11,443.89 with 4.57% spent to date. An increased Line 226 Insurance and Bonds by $138. That account currently has a deficit balance of $137.42 and of course, the internal budget revision is requested due to the deficit balance.
Altogether, I haven't heard anything of problems with the budget already due to COVID or anything like that, so we're pretty much on track at this point.
Your grant writers are superstars and they're on top of making sure that we get our CARE Act reimbursements. In fact, we just received an update this morning that our total of July CARE Act reimbursement is just slightly less than $600,000. So we did look at, I did get the rec and south fund balances for July. And of course, you know, all of this is a big revenue from the rest of the property taxes, but if July is any indication, I think we'll be able to make payroll for a little bit longer.
That's good.
Yeah.
Didn't you have a parts and rec meeting?
Yes.
Was there, how was there?
Oh, they're deep and serious. They're hoping for the county to meet and come up with some additional revenue because of the different things.
But they haven't been able to find any avenues to use care money or something like that?
The problem is, whatever they need, they don't have the volume of regular employees because a lot of them are seasonal and part-time. A lot of, most of their stuff is operational and maintenance and that type of thing. And they only, I think they got up to, at 1,500 the first round and then with Tracy's help, they got additional, something like total of $7,400 that they've gotten turned in as opposed to 1,500 original, but not, not any big volume. And they're hoping that of course with these, the governors made statements that organizations such as nonprofits, such as the Rec Board could be able to draw some revenue because last month they turned back 108,000 of funding that was for activities. And most of the activities have been canceled and they're limited. There's some, what we call, camps are running and things, but they're such small. Normally you have 60 to 80 in a camp, I think they again have 20. So even the revenue that's coming in is barely paying the stamp that's there.
So they didn't qualify for that payroll forgiveness either, do they? And because of nonprofit. But that's kind of a unique nonprofit status, really. You would think there would be a different designation for that because, you know, it's like the National Park Service, you know, they still have to continue to take care of all their properties and all that. It's not like, you know, a nonprofit, like say the Boys and Girls Club that could shut down their doors. You can't shut down your doors when you have all this massive. You can't shut down your doors when you have all this massive, of real estate, you still have to manage.
Right.
Not, not that, not that the Boys and Girls Club wouldn't have big problems either shutting down their doors and not taking care of the kids, but you know what I'm saying? Okay.
There's a trickle down to it.
Yes.
Tim? Haven't you heard enough about trickle down? That, no, there's no such thing as a trickle down.
I guess I haven't, sorry.
How about a domino, Dan?
Uh, domino, yeah, well. I've, I've, I, I do believe in trickle down economics and how it works, but I've been told many times that there's no such thing.
And it all flows downhill.
Yeah. Well, we know that for a fact. We know that for a fact. All right. Changing status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie DeLaGuetti, prosecuting attorney for the following individuals. Randy North as a legal assistant with an annual salary of thirty-four five effective August twenty-four, twenty twenty. James Lyons as a legal assistant with an annual salary of thirty-one five effective August thirty-one, twenty twenty. We have, uh...
Why would you hire two legal assistants?
Different levels of qualifications.
I don't know, I was educated.
I was waiting, I figured you were gonna throw that out, that you didn't know. That was a good education intent.
So he just got educated?
I'm trying to read the next one. Who, who wrote this again? It says, "Letter is resignation." I, I think.
Letter of resignation.
Oh, resignation, no. Letter, letter of resignation received from the Day Report Center for, uh, Brianna Lang, uh, effective August twenty-eight, twenty twenty.
I'm up. Tracy, thank you for the...
She actually did not do that.
Oh, okay. Then you don't have to come up.
I know, but I, 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 I'm sure somebody really appreciates you not pointing them out, Okay, now we, now you, now you guys have already put it out there. Both of you say no.
Okay, I'll admit to it. You know, my typing skills are horrible.
All right, Jim. Approval of minutes for August sixth, twenty twenty, Berkeley County Council Meeting. Everyone was present. Move us on to the county council calendar. If I can find it here.
We're here today.
We're here today. All right. We're here on, on the twentieth, and we'll be back on the twenty-seventh. All right?
Twenty-second is the surplus auction. Saturday.
Saturday night.
Okay, so here we are. Uh, we don't have Saturdays on our calendar, remember?
It's at the bottom.
Oh, it's in highlighted. It was in green. I, I would have noticed if it was red. Uh, nine-thirty AM on the twenty-fourth, we have a nine-thirty AM home consortia, consortium, um, meeting. At five o'clock, we have a Water District meeting. On the twenty-sixth, we have a ten AM CBB and a three PM Senior Services. And on the twenty-seventh, that evening, we have an ambulance authority at five o'clock and a library board at five o'clock. And Saturday, August, see, I got down to it.
You got it there.
Saturday, August twenty-second, we have a surplus auction.
Also, on the twenty-fourth, we have a huge, uh, planning development, uh, Zoom meeting at, uh, four o'clock.
I can tell you're excited about that.
Zoom. Also tomorrow, just to rewind it to the council, and I know Tim is here, so we'll brief you further. Uh, tomorrow, James W. Carroll, who is the director of the Office of National Control Policy, is actually a member of, uh, the president's executive staff, um, will be here, uh, meeting with the, um, the council and, uh, representatives of the Day Report Center and talk about some exciting stuff that are gonna be in the future.
So where do we meet?
First floor.
Okay, here.
Recovery Resources.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah. Good, good stuff. Good stuff. Okay, let's see. Board and commission calendars. Uh, I think that pretty much wraps up everything there. Unless we wanna start talking about, uh, September. Moving on to bond release, we have a, um, a Millards, Millardsville Section One File, what? What? I don't know. I, I'm not familiar with that one. I've never even heard of it, actually. Jim should know about it.
No, Jim doesn't.
He's on the Planning Commission, he knows all.
No, he doesn't. I'll have to take a pass on that one, too.
Look at the file number, two thousand seven, so it's been laying out there for a while.
Since, since the council actually holds control over the bonds, we do not process them through the Planning Commission. They are referred from engineering to the, because the councils wanna invoke them if they need to, so.
So two thousand seven, I'm, I'm assuming that predate you?
Predates me, yes.
Not you, but just your time.
Just my time, yeah.
Okay. Two thousand seven oh sixty-seven Engineering Department. Um, we have a bond release, a bond release for Millardsville Section Three, File two thousand seven zero six six Engineering Department. Uh, bond release for Mason Commercial Storage, eight twenty-nine Harold Drive, File two thousand six oh one oh. I'm guessing that was a previous number? What was that, R? It's got in parentheses, what is that, another engineering number, I guess, that's on there? Uh, let's see. Bond reduction, uh, Collis Homes Duckwoods Lane Pebble Ridge Phase Three Section Five Lots, twenty-seven to thirty-four, and one thirty-seven to one forty-seven, and one eighty-six to one ninety-four, and two oh one to two oh seven Engineering Departments. Do we have any questions about those? Nobody's here from the, that department. I'm, I'm going to assume that these, uh, um, these, uh, issues with, uh, common properties have been addressed on these two bond issues. Cancelled check request from the county, county clerk's finance office. Okay. No conflict here with that. Uh, okay, so I, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time.
So move, Mr. Vice President.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a motion approved. We're gonna move on to Mr. Hess. Good morning, Mr. Hess. Looks like you have a couple personal property tax exoneration due to taxpayer error to start with.
Yes, sir, I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I just have two personal property, all the stare, tax bonds, or taxpayer errors this morning, uh, and they were both, they didn't write off the, the, and, so they totaled up to two hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents for those two.
All, everyone paying attention should realize that that's really important to make sure you do that because that's pretty much most of what you come with all the time, isn't it?
Yeah. It, it asks you to put on what you owe or don't owe, but it doesn't tell you on the form, mark it out, you know, and law people just skip it. That's why I like to see, to give them at least one mistake on that. Cause a lot of them, a lot of older people just, and they wind up paying taxes twice on the car.
It's definitely, uh, it's, it's, it definitely is, uh, definitely is something you need to take care of, that's for sure. And it's more complicated when you own a business and have multiple vehicles and start looking back and forth on, uh, you know, I mean.
Business, we had to go along with.
My, my wife, my wife deals with my business side of it and, and she's like, she fills it out, and then I look at her, I'm like, yeah, that's not right, you know? And what about this and this? And then she's like, I didn't know you thought that, you know?
I think the same way, these tax reps fill out some of these forms for businesses, they...
And I'm just, my business is small, you know? I can't imagine what these big guys have to deal with all the time.
Yeah. Any rate, we have, there's two for two forty-three.
I'll entertain a motion on the two personal tax exoneration.
Yes, sir. President, per champ, I need to accept the taxpayer error exoneration, and about a two to three eighty.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Failed. Thirteen personal property tax.
We've got thirteen office air, um, personal property, uh, we did get, a couple of these we've had, they weren't all last week. When Florence left, she had filed, where they had a couple of these in there, but he just ran across, that we've made, she made up before the bills went out, but so all thirteen, they didn't come from last week, but there's a total of thirteen of them here for this week for the reasons that's listed there, and they add up to one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-six for those two.
I'll entertain a motion on the thirteen personal property tax exoneration.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a motion. Two real estate tax exoneration.
We've got two office air for real estate, and, uh, we totaled up to a thousand sixty-two dollars and sixty cents. Uh, one of those, uh, was keyed wrong, keyed as a pole building, instead of keyed it as a bank barn, which is totally a big difference in the prices or squares, you can't imagine that, so. The other was, yeah, we just filled a whole lot of the law parts.
So AD one is what?
AD one is a bank barn.
Okay.
Which considers a total bank barn, you know, they set it in the bank and hang it one side.
I get you. Yep.
The other is just a pole building.
Just a metal pole?
Pole building, no five, three floors, it's a pole building, so a big difference in the price.
If you're gonna build something, you want a less taxed due pole barns, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a, uh, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Looks like we have, uh, another, uh... A divorce.
Yeah. These are the same, get along, this is, for Mr. and Mrs., uh, I didn't know, Mr. and Mrs., Michael and Jennifer Boyer, they had five vehicles, total assessed value of eighteen thousand two twenty-five, and we were, we split the bill up for them, and he got four vehicles, total assessed value twenty-seven ten, but she got just one more expensive one for thirteen thousand five fifty. Just used your people.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the divorce.
Make a motion that we accept the, the vision of the tax bill for them.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have, uh, consolidation.
One last thing, yes. Uh, consolidation for a Michael brothers, he had, uh, two parcels in the Peckham District, that fourteen, parcel twenty-two, and one for one, and he's gonna put them together to get one tax bill, so we consolidate.
They both did. Michael and Kathy, right?
Yes.
Okay. We have a, we have a application for consolidation. I entertain a motion. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep, that does agree.
All right, Larry.
I just had it all covered. Yep.
Have a good day. Board meeting reports. We'll start down there with Mr. Zoom.
Well, thank you, sir. I, uh, attended the, uh, Board of Health meeting via Zoom on Monday, and, uh, mostly they, uh, discussed COVID and how it's affecting the Health Department and how everybody's trying to pull together, working in some cases seven days a week, you know, getting everything done, and they're really looking forward to the, the vaccine comes out to the ministry. You know, God knows how many doses of vaccine, and maybe even, you know, could be that, you know, two-shot series, which complicates things to ten thousand.
Just keep your tabs.
Yeah. So, you know, they're really looking forward to that, and, uh, I did have a ten-day MPO meeting, but one, it's a meeting, two, I have dental procedures, so I'll leave that one to the link.
Uh, this week was interesting. We had lots of meetings and, again, I had a lot of electronic problems. I wasn't on Zoom, and I'm chairing, chairing a committee meeting over telephone.
You're the chair?
Yeah, the chair, yeah. Could not get it to, all the little things that says, there's the link, and then I get, I can do it on farmland, different ones of the MPO, I can't get it to work. I don't, they keep saying it's the wrong number. That's okay. A lot of things going on, uh, this week. We'll start with the MPO. This is the meeting paperwork.
You're not gonna go through all that, are you?
No, but I'm gonna go over the West Virginia part. Um, in the, uh, uh, the West Virginia area, the train corridor station is, is still online. Of course, you can see them now, they're up at, up to Martin Street, tearing, uh, the corner of Martin and Queen, tearing all the way down to the station.
It would've been nice if they, uh, put a, uh, road close on the ends of the street, not right there where you try to go cross streets.
Well, the other thing...
I, I went down there with a trailer the other day, and I go all the way down the street, and there's a blockade there, and I'm like, are you kidding me? No, that's more scary.
I like it when they're working on High Street and they don't tell you at the beginning of High Street to tell you.
Right when you get there.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. That's what happened to me.
It's in front of my house, so it's a real mess.
And then I had to, I had to back up. I'm like, really?
Yes. Anyhow, uh, going on, uh, with the different things going on with the, uh, Martin Street is a problem, is, of course, you know, it's, people say, well, it's the, it's the train station corridor. There's no sign that says the train station, no sign that says the roundhouse. So if you even had a clue, you might be able to avoid it, but that's not gonna happen. Rock Cliff Drive Improvement is not, is set up for twenty-two. Uh, the, uh, Streetscape, uh, is supposed to be finished by the end of the year for the bicycle and pedestrian element that they put in, uh, a total of, uh, eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for that project. Uh, Tabor Station, they're widening the ramps, thank goodness, because that's been such a mess out there.
Maybe they'll give us some roundabouts out there.
Uh, gee, well, I, I did notice at the corner of, uh, Rock Cliff Drive and Tavern Road that they've got some survey marks out there.
They're getting ready to do that?
Yes, I saw those little red flags.
I've seen some emails about it.
They're doing, uh, some more widening of a lot of the ramps in Berkeley County off of eighty-one, and, uh, and they're also gonna be doing more striping. And of course, I got a complaint about the striping. They'd said that it was, looked like it was, uh, done by an EBR driver, uh, because it was everywhere, uh, but, uh, that's the way it goes. But most of the stuff is resurfacing and redoing the ramps. But my situation with that is, until they get the number of lanes they're gonna have, that's gonna be a moving target because your ramp changes depending on what the, with all the other stuff that they're doing, the, the, that, the direction. The other thing is that we got a transit safety performance, uh, measure, uh, response. This was something required by the FTA, uh, started in July of eighteen, and it talks about the tub, number of fatalities, and it talks about vehicles from the buses to regular vehicles to commuter bus on, on transit service. So it's a safety issue, so that has to be included in all of our reports. But, uh, the material is all online at the MPO, lots of maps, uh, that talks about the direction, the new, uh, EPTA, uh, bus service in, in late hours, uh, and evening hours has changed, and so that schedule was also discussed at that particular meeting. The, uh, second thing has to do with the roundhouse. I filed, uh, as of the fifteenth or something, uh, paperwork regarding an intent to apply for Department of Public Safety. I filed, uh, as of the fifteenth or something, uh, paperwork regarding intent to apply for Department of Highway grant. Uh, and we got the thing on Tuesday or Wednesday that it's, the application's been accepted. I can go to the website, bring down the application to, to apply. And I have another letter that I have to do regarding the twenty percent to see how we can work around that. Uh, the, the meeting with the contractor, Casey Smith.
What's that grain going to be used for?
The concrete and elevator. We get, we get it.
I remember you saying that. I just wanted to put it on the record.
Okay, for the bridge shop, yes. Uh, the roundhouse restrooms, uh, they have gotten the invoice one and two paid for. And this week, the sprinkler people are finishing up. They're running the line testing as of, we finish by Friday. Next week, everything will be painted with that, uh, anti-graffiti type paint. And then the following week, all the installation of the booths and the commo's and those types of things. The punch out will be the week of September eighth. So maybe by mid-September, we might have restrooms at the roundhouse.
Did they do that on the, uh, Burke Street Bridge? They use that paint? I remember when they put the Raleigh Street extension in and I had said something about that happening on those bridges and they decided not to do it. Now there's graffiti all over. Um, and I mean, the only way you do is put whitewash on top of the whatever.
This stuff enables you to just basically, oh, no, wipe, just wipe it off.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you spray it off.
But you spin, again, it's not.
You can pressure wash it right off.
Right. It isn't something that's, it's really, because you're working with the porous material of stone, that's every block. So consequently, you've got that. So if you don't seal that, then you've really got a problem.
And I believe, I believe it's a one-time application. So once you spray it off, you have to reapply that coating on it. So that, uh, any additional graffiti will be able to be sprayed off because I think it takes that coating off when you spray it off.
Uh, so the other meeting we had this week on Tuesday was the Parks and Rec and we had discussed some of the issues. Basically is really, uh, financially, uh, really having some problems. Um, the, uh, they were supposed to do a dedication, uh, for the Randy Smith and it's been postponed. Uh, they are going to open the Goldie Gibbons Park, uh, but the dedication will be later date. So September first, they hope to have the Goldie Gibbons Park, uh, ready to go. So that if you have, uh, dogs you wanna walk to the dog park, if you go ahead and register with the, the parks, uh, you get your, uh, uh, I think it's a fee and you get a watch, you get a fob to work on the, uh, the gates.
Does the fee or the fob work for all the parks?
Right, yes, yes.
Oh.
Both, both parks. So your fee will cover either one.
Right, but Goldie Gibbons shouldn't be a financial issue because didn't, wasn't their money actually put aside?
Very fortunately for me, Virginia, who I went to school with, left the money to, uh, to do all the construction and also for future maintenance. So there is a trust fund that's sitting there. But the reason the dedication is taking so long, of course, the COVID issue and of course, the family members are older and they wanna be there to do the actual dedication, et cetera. So whenever they feel like it, we're gonna be working forward to that.
So where's the dog park planned on the south end? If you got one on the north end and one in the middle of the county, is there a thought process?
At this particular point, let someone steps forward because the dog park in, at Ambrose was dedicated by the, a, a family also. So it was totally, both of which have been paid for by families. Jim, look like you had a question.
Yeah, how, how large is the size of the lot is that at Goldie Gibbons?
Not much.
Oh, yeah.
Slightly more than one acre.
Little bit.
Isn't it making, according to the newspaper, it's like one twenty-three. There was a very nice article when, uh, Carol Melas did it. Um, about, about the dedication and, and how it's being all that. And I remember, I think it said it was one twenty-three or something like, but just, just about.
There's a parcel ground, south on eleven, used to be the old Morgan Morgan Park, right there along, um, Mill Creek. That has since then not been well taken care of.
Well, but you see, it belongs to the state and Mrs. Hoffman is the one that gets it moved. She pays a dollar a year to do that.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't know what size lot that is. I have no clue. But that's the only state park in West, in Brooklyn County.
Yeah.
That posted stamp their great degree. Uh.
It's a good place for one, though.
That's what I was thinking, right near the water.
Sounds good place. Just gotta get funding to.
Yeah, make it happen.
Put the fences on a lot.
Where's our grant writers?
Uh, the reopening of the, the War Memorial Park will be, pool will be open till September seventh. Um, the Poor House Farm, of course, they financially, they're, they're not, you know, they don't have a lot of, uh, they got a lot of people walking and all that, but the rentals are down because of the COVID. Uh, they are having some security problems with people not leaving one at, at dusk. The gentleman, he tries to get them to go and I don't think we can say is that they have to call the Sheriff's Department and.
And what are they doing that they're not having, maybe they're faking or wandering around?
Well, people are, are using the, you know, they're there with the pavilion and stuff on their own and, and they haven't registered or something. And they're not leaving when, when asked.
Maybe they're spending the night.
Yeah.
I mean, they had, they had in the city park until, uh, about a year or two, about two years ago. They, they had a guy living in the city park for nine years that slept there every night.
But, uh, anyway, as that goes, I, I had to express to them that, uh, cause one of them got, he said, well, we'll just call the state police. I said, Berkeley County Sheriff's Department covers the state police calls in the evening. So that, as I said, I had told you, you have to call this, the Sheriff's Department. I mean, it's not gonna happen that way. Uh, they are asking for a face-to-face meeting with the council regarding, uh, funding and the fact that, uh, we're looking at a ten-year plan. Of course, he, uh, pointed to Alan, a lot of people are in favor of a sports complex.
Hold on a second. You said, we're looking at a ten-year plan. They have a ten-year plan now?
No, they're looking at doing a ten-year plan. They're don't, they're gonna be, they can afford a hundred thousand, but they've got a committee together to start looking at a ten-year plan.
I got it.
To put things together. Uh, in fact, I've got those statistics that I worked on. I still have four or five counties. I'm hoping that, I can, I'm still trying to get these, some of these places.
They want a hundred thousand dollars to put together a ten-year plan?
Yes.
Wow, that's what I need to be doing.
Yes. Well, the, the, the airport was sixty some time. Yeah. So it's, you know.
But, but you know, those plans, when we did the airport, I mean, that's interaction from the board. So, I mean, if you look at what they did, other than some research on numbers, they basically gather information. I mean, we, you know, I've heard several times about, uh, the, the, the Garner report of the city. You know, the Garner report was generated from the city council. I mean, they ask you questions about what your goals are and what you wanna see and then they just put all that stuff together and use it as a plan. So.
Well, see, the basic thing that I have, the report that I'm working on to put it summarized, it's all fifty-five counties regarding state parks, uh, national forests and all that, what's in each county and how much is being spent by counties. And so when I get that thing finished, that'll probably be the basis of what we're working on. Uh, the gentleman, Alan.
So you're gonna put them together a plan?
No, I, I've got the, the, the statistics that's part of the plan.
Okay.
Uh, he, he said he was talking to someone about the sports complex in Charleston. And they said, of course, up here with the size we are, that we can have one, uh, two or three times bigger than the one in Charleston because of location.
Hold on a second. Didn't you just say they didn't have money to pay the bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I, I'm just, I know, I, I'm, I'm not the, I'm just the carrier of the news.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, anyway, this is a, they need a, they would like to have a conversation with the county. Uh, they have gotten, uh, the, David Dejean is doing the five oh one three C. Uh, the, uh, they've got a lot of support from, uh, the gentleman from, uh, Clorox and Board of Ed on different projects that they're working on. And, uh, they, they haven't hired, they were looking to try, they have to hire some additional personnel, but this is replacements regarding the facilities and things that need to be taken care of. And the Oak Street restroom is just about finished. Tennis courts, they hope to have open by September fifteenth. Uh, the bad news, and I, they had a report, I don't know, uh, they had another meeting with Ambrose Park Cell Tower regarding the housing authority approving the cell tower on Ambrose property. They had turned it down a red swing because Ambrose thought there was gonna be all kinds of cell towers in there. So they're waiting to see what they can do. It makes a difference of twenty-one thousand per year that would help, it would absolutely make Ambrose, uh, financial free from the rec board, cause it would be, be able to be supported by that.
Doesn't the, 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 did I hear before that the Randy Smith Center is financially stable with what it does as well? And, and Poor House Farm at some point, I mean.
Poor House Farm, with the number of events coming in and going, uh, has been financially stable. Randy Smith, again, you've gotta have a, someone up there. Uh, and of course, with all the additional property, excuse me, additional rooms and, and, and the gym, et cetera. They will be probably financially stable, but your problem with the cost is when you schedule, let's say, a camp that normally has sixty to eighty kids in it and you only have twenty. That's what the problem is. And, but the problem, other side of the picture, you've got people that wanna use it, but because of COVID and the numbers, you can't, you can't do it. So as I said, they returned over a hundred and eight thousand dollars in the last month, uh, returns because they thought they were gonna be able to have certain activities and they weren't able to do that.
Did they, is, is, is this done that way across the state? Um, or, or even the region with, um, with like these rec centers and those type of things being owned and operated by the Parks and Rec? Or is there a different entity that operates those type of facilities?
Most of the places in the state, from what I'm finding out, the organizations, as far as the counties, give some monies. Uh, compared to everybody else, there's a major ticket from the, like Washington County or Frederick County, Virginia that goes into recreation that say, I mean, we're not making six dollars a person.
Right, but are they, uh, uh, I, I, and you're talking about funding. I'm talking about operation. I'm talking about.
They normally have somebody from the county or some, this is the only one, though, that's county, city and school board. Everything else is normally county.
Right. That's, that, that was a question I asked the other day. I think, I think that's probably the case.
But the, the good part is that everybody's throwing something into the pot, which is, is a whole lot better than a lot of other areas. And of course, he's looking at, the gentleman, uh, Alan Corbin, the new director, is looking at the fact that, is the Bridgeport of Carpsburg has just opened a new sports center that costs forty-seven million dollars. But the county, or excuse me, the city of whichever one dedicated their one cent sales tax to pay that off.
Right. Somebody else is funding it, probably operating it that way.
But it's, and I, and it's been, but it's being operated by the city or county, whoever's got that.
Thank you, Elaine.
Sorry, take some.
You got anything?
Nope.
Told you.
You used up all Jim's time.
Sorry.
Um, the, uh, I did have a couple of meetings. I had a, uh, um, a transcendental meeting, um, this week. And the, um, mostly business as usual. Their numbers are growing, so they're actually really starting to pick up numbers again.
Do they require masks when you ride?
Uh, I think they're requiring masks when you ride. I think they're still requiring social distancing and.
Comes down.
Let them.
Number of bus.
And it makes it, it definitely makes it more difficult. They, uh, um, they had some, uh, uh, they were going, they were talking about buying a couple of new buses and they put that off because now there's a reimbursement, um, that they're going to get for renting that covers all the expenses, everything, a hundred percent, and they don't own it. So I think they're going to rent a couple of buses because it's, costs nothing to do it. Uh, instead of buy one and then you gotta maintain. Um, so that's a, that's a good thing for them, I guess. Um, see, I had a, I had a.
Nick's still chairman of that?
What's that?
Nick's still chairman of that.
Nick, Nick is the chairman. Nick, uh, he does a very good job.
And he always did, I assume.
Very, very good job, very, very knowledgeable. And that's a good, solid board. Uh, Elaine Bartleson does a great job, um, keeping that with, with her team in place. Um, she's a very smart lady and knows how to delegate authorities. So, um, yeah, they do a very good job in continuing to, uh, roll with the punches, so to speak. Every time they turn around, it's something changing and how you have to do something and something changing on how you have to fund it. So they're always, uh, chasing the cat, so to speak. Um, but, um.
What's the, is there progress on developing the new center?
That's all in the works, yeah. It's all moving forward. They have, uh, they have funding to, to move forward. It's just, uh, government bureaucracy that.
Aren't they at the design stage at this point?
Huh?
Aren't, aren't they at the design?
They are. Yeah, yeah. But everything is, you know, you can't design until you got, even though you got the funding, you can't do anything until funding's available.
All right.
You know, and then, you know what I'm talking about? And then you gotta deal with them giving you the funding, you know? Um, but now they're, they're moving forward and, um, and I think there's actually, have they, have they said anything to you about putting a bigger, um, um.
Camping.
Canopy out here? They're talking about, um, making this transfer station larger to be able to handle more traffic out here.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not, you know, they're gonna be doing what the day reports are and that's gonna increase the traffic here, so that's complete.
Yeah, and they, they, they do, they do a very good job. That's, that's one of the boards that, you know, there's, you, you don't have to, they, they have all the answers. When you show up there and talk to them and meet with them, it's, they're, they're moving forward. Um, we had a, uh, criminal justice board yesterday, um, with, uh, I'm, I'm, I've left my paperwork at home, but I think it was, I think we're at a hundred and seventy couple, um, in the, uh, day report center now? Hundred ninety, okay. Um, that's what it was. It was a hundred and seventy, went to a hundred and ninety, I have something like that. Yeah, which is, uh, um, really big. And is it, are we eighty with the, uh, home confinement?
Uh, I think seventy-nine.
He's, he's next on there. As I say, he's next on the report. You might as well get him up there.
Yeah. So, so, uh, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll let, we'll let him give us all his numbers. But, uh, yeah, good, uh, it's good to see the progress, the things happening, uh, um, with that. And, uh, I won't steal all his thunder, but, uh, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's great to, uh, it's great to, uh, see the, see what's going on with that board. That board continues to save the taxpayers money, save lives. Um, I, I, uh, Tim hasn't seen this, but I got a letter, um, actually today on my desk. Couple of weeks ago, uh, I had seen somebody was having difficulty on Facebook. Um, they were really frustrated with the hospital, so I reached out. Um, my afternoon, um, meetings were kinda interrupted back and forth trying to help this lady with, uh, um, with their, her son that was addicted and, uh, going through some, uh, some real, real troubling times. And, uh, um, by the end of the day, we were able to, we, um, I say we, we leaning him in the direction or guiding them to get to the Recovery Resource Center. The Recovery Resource Center was, uh, able to, uh, um, get him help. And so his mother sent me a letter thanking us and, and, uh, we're saving her son's life because she fully believes that he wouldn't be here if he didn't receive help. And, uh, not only that, but she said, you know, if there's anything she can do, um, to help, um, the program. She, she'd like to help out as well. So, so that's good stuff, good stuff, you know, coming. And, uh, we'll hear from Tim here in a minute. Um, anything else? Um, board and commission vacancies? Um, do we have any of that?
Yes, indeed. How about, um, I'd like to, uh, reappoint Kevin Knowles for the Criminal Justice Board. Term expires August the thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We also have our own Reverend Ken Walker here for the Criminal Justice Board. His term expires August thirty-first also for reappointment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And a letter received from Catherine Brady for the Berkeley County, uh, Criminal Justice Board. Her term expires also. I'd like to make that motion to reappoint her.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Anything else?
I'd like to thank anybody that serves on a board in this county for taking their time to help out. Thank you.
Thank, and, 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 you know, yesterday I had that conversation in the Criminal Justice Board that, you know, we have, uh, we have a lot of individuals in this community and, you know, when, when you look at, uh, some of the boards that where we're doing building buildings and bathrooms and, you know, recreating the wheel on some of these boards and the amount of, of, uh, free time. of free time these people give to help out is amazing. So I definitely, definitely agree with you, Jim. There.
And getting good people is 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 very important on our success, particularly with, you know, all the boards, but all the directions that have changed just in a matter of time that we've been in office with the Criminal Justice Board and how it is, you're talking about affecting lives. We were going nowhere when we started, and in the last five years, we've made tremendous progress.
And you know, that board is, that board is structured by the state, but a real healthy board because you have, and and that's, you know, that's one of the things that when I look at appointments for boards, I try to do the same thing to get people that think differently. You don't want everybody say, everybody say yes to move to one, you know, one link forward. You want to be able to have a discussion and look at the ups and downs of it. And and the state, I think, did a really good job of of the requirements for that. So with that being said, let's uh, let's get the guy up here that's in charge of all that.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tim.
I came to provide an update here this morning regarding some HIDA funding. It's pretty exciting. How I prefer, but I'll briefly tell you, as Dan mentioned a minute ago, the courthouse closure and COVID restrictions and such. Our 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 active participant count was at two hundred and twenty in February and in March, and we dropped to one seventy. We have since begun to to increase that active participant base again. So new referrals are outweighing the number of people who are discharged from the program or graduating. So as of yesterday, we were up to a hundred and eighty seven, I think it was. So we're continuing to climb again, which is which is good.
I'd I'd like to note that we also, while your program was closed, seen if I'm, and I may be wrong, but I think it's the highest spike in overdoses that we've seen since your program started.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, and there there are, I I had a number of calls with folks from in the HIDA moves there, Baltimore, DC, and Virginia, some of those initiatives there. Some of those areas did not see more overdose, over more deaths by way of overdose than COVID deaths than we did, but that's exactly what happened in Berkeley County. Our overdose deaths, I can't remember the numbers now off my head, I didn't come prepared with those, but doubled or tripled the number of deaths attributed to COVID. We saw a spike. We continue to see see high numbers.
But what haven't haven't we seen, and and correct me if I'm wrong, but haven't we seen some of these regions that had these programs, their programs starting to downsize in some of their programs instead of continuing to grow? And we're on the opposite side of that. We're continuing to grow.
Yes.
And maybe that's a part of that product. I don't know.
The home confinement program continues to be well oiled machine. They just, they're operating. I'm sorry?
What are they up to?
Eighty, eighty, eighty participants. And I believe it's the number, it was like three hundred and sixty seven that we passed through confinement at this point.
Don't you have another, don't you have another group that's waiting on that, too?
That the 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 number of people who are waiting to go to court to be sentenced to home confinement averaged around twenty five. I think it was twenty nine yesterday.
What general number, sentence, home confinement for what, thirty days or sixty days or ten days?
It varies. I would say a six month sentence is average, but but we've had people sentenced to thirty days. We've had people, we have people sentenced to a one to ten. Yeah. So there's there's a range. I would say a good average is six to twelve months. Correct me if I'm wrong, next Thursday Stephanie Stow will be here. Is that right? I'll provide a recovery services update. Stephanie will do a much better job at that than I do because she tracks all sorts of data down at the Recovery Resource Center. She can update you all a lot of the work that's happening down there. Before I get into the HIDA update, though, I just want to share with you all, Ray Denuzo is the name of the project foreman over here for Wolf Reconstruction, building renovation for us. And a couple of months ago, in one of our meetings, he asked if we had any any permanent participants or people in home confinement who may be able to, his laborers. So I brought, he asked four people. I brought him six because I just thought two three may not work out. But I brought I brought them over to meet him and he went around and asked them kind of roughly if they had any experience working in construction. A few of them did, a few of them didn't. One of them was a female named Tiffany. And he said, have you ever done any kind of work like this before? She said, no. Said, can you, can you sweep and pick up trash and move supplies around? And she said, sure. Said, do you have steel toe boots? And she said, I think I have boots. So he said, well, if you show up tomorrow, I'll put you to work, I'll take you and I'll buy you a pair of boots. Pay me back and give me a paycheck. He hired them all on the spot. He 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 started them all at fifteen dollars an hour. He told them all that if they worked well for a week, he'd bring them back and give them seventy five cent raise. If they worked well for a second week, he'd bring them back and give them seventy five cent raise up to seventeen fifty an hour. Pay them as contractors. And then if they continued to do well, he'd bring them on as full-time employees. And he's done just that. And all six of them have shown up to work and 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 worked well for them. He even said to me, I don't quite have enough work for all six because I I kind of needed four. I wanted to give it all, give them all an opportunity. So I just want to share that with you because that's pretty amazing that that they did that. And the fact that this guy took a girl who has zero experience and bought her steel toe boots to put her to work kind of speaks to who they are as a company. I want to share that with you all. HIDA, as you all know, HIDA's been a huge supporter of ours since since the beginning. HIDA receives funding from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, and they distribute their their funding to various initiatives. We've been one of them. They've been very generous to us. In years past, there have been some initiatives that haven't spent all their money. And HIDA wants the money to be spent, so they've actually just contacted us and said, hey, can you use more money? We've said, sure. So they've been very generous.
They don't want it all to be spent. They want it all to be used to help.
Correct. They want it to be used appropriately.
Right.
They want it to be used wisely. So this past year, they went to RF, they did a request for proposals. It was essentially a grant application that needed to be submitted for a a one-time discretionary funding request. And I fed Rachel some some information and said, this is, this is what I think I'd like to request. And she put together a fantastic application. She did it pretty quickly. And and we submitted it. What I requested was funding to pay masters level contractors to come in, buy treatment. And I just did rough math, sixty dollars an hour, forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks out of the year, hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars to the request. And I did that thinking, we're probably not going to get more money because they've been as generous to us as they have. And if we do get some of it, it'll be a fraction of it. Well, a couple of weeks ago, Tom Carr called me. And I don't get calls from Tom Carr every day, so I was kind of surprised by that. He wanted to share with me that not only was our request being fully funded, but the director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy wanted to come in and visit us and hear more about our programs and see our facility. And that's extremely exciting for us, I think. They're going to be here tomorrow. James Carroll, the director of O N D C P, Tom Carr, director of Washington, Baltimore, HIDA, Congressman Alex Mooney will be here. Katie will be in attendance, several of you all, Alan. Senator Capito and Senator Manchin's reps will be here. A couple of other people from O N D C P here will be in attendance. And we're going to have a a roundtable discussion and we'll have an opportunity to share with them about the work they were doing in Berkeley County. Allow them to meet us face to face and see our facility. And that's exciting. This funding, what it means for for the Day Report Center is we've 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 had a, again, we have a fantastic partnership with County Behavioral Health. They employ, I think there's four right now, there's been five full-time masters level clinicians who we provide space to. And they provide the majority of the treatment for our folks, but only the folks who have Medicaid or or private insurance. Well, we have, I'm going to make up a number here. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty or seventy participants who work. And because they work, they're not eligible for Medicaid and they can't afford private insurance. So although those folks, I would prefer to see them in treatment with masters level clinicians, we plug them into to to groups that that our staff run, the Day Report Center staff. And they do a great job, but they've not been formally trained to provide group and individual therapy the way that masters level clinician has. Well, this funding will allow us to bring on, if you all allow us to, to bring on a masters level clinician as one of our employees who can provide treatment to that population, folks that don't have insurance because they're working. And this would be huge for us. It would it would greatly increase the quality of of care that we're providing to our participants. We will have money left over to bring in other contractor employees to to pay an hourly rate to provide group and individual therapy to our folks. This will allow Berkeley County to have a masters prepared clinician on staff to be available to employees even. So this is, this is pretty significant. So not only am I sharing that with you all, but I'm requesting approval to proceed with recruiting for a masters prepared clinician.
And and we'll develop a job description, and we've already graded it out. Knowing that probably based on some of the market, the market analysis that we've done, it's going to land at around sixty-five thousand with benefits, which which will be fully funded by the grant, and it'll be a grant funded position just like our others. So that if in the absence of a grant, then we would have to decide whether we want to continue funding. I certainly would.
What's the term of this grant? How long?
One year.
One year.
Certainly recommend that that we that we do it. It gives us the ability to to extend the arm of of treatment that we haven't we haven't been able to. So.
Correct.
It's 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 kind of a big deal.
I think it's definitely the next level to go from what we're doing. I think that it's it's great that that HIDA is allowing us this test run to be able to try this out and see if it if it will work with the program and and what the benefits will be. So that in a year from now, we can decide whether or not we want to continue with that. I think it's a, I think it's a a great opportunity for us to look at. And even though, and and you know, there's another, you know, this whole process, I I remember in the very beginning, some of the conversation in the beginning where this ain't going to happen, this ain't going to happen, and this is not going to happen. And just by everybody, employees and 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 council members having an open mind and evaluating, looking at what happens each time we make a step. We've been able to progress from having nothing to where we are today. And that that speaks a lot for for the employees as well as as well as the council to be able to continue to move in the right direction.
Four years.
Four years.
August first of sixteen. And and if if this funding, we've talked about this funding a year ago, I would have said, we need this person and we have the money, but we don't have the space. Well, we're about to have the space here.
It was, wasn't it in July of sixteen that the the year before, we had an MOU with Jefferson County in July of sixteen when we had the the Rhonda Addy here talking about funding. At that point, we made a motion to, maybe we should just do this ourselves.
You sent me to Charleston to be with the subcommittee, who just because of timing, met on July thirty first. And they approved it, become effective the next day.
They keep telling us that we're lucky.
You know, there is no limits with luck.
If you don't, but if you don't throw the ideas out there, you'll never see her.
I've always told everybody I'd rather be lucky than good because good only gets you to what your talent is. Luck, there is no limit. So you can disguise the limit. So do you need, do we need consensus today? I mean, obviously, this isn't on the agenda for a motion.
Just consensus for me to recruit?
To proceed, move to proceed.
Pending a order.
Yep. So I think we're going to give you something else to do as well, somebody else to oversee.
I don't mind.
And it, I I think there'll be another benefit to this individual being able to help your staff go in the right direction as well.
Hundred percent.
This this week, Tim, I saw a, and I wanted to respond to it, but I don't know where my emails go. I think there's a big hole somewhere. But it was a report coming back from the state asking questions about in in-house drug treatment since two thousand and seven. And I was thinking, you know, when we started this program with Kevin and everybody, there was nothing in the state. I didn't even realize there was an initiative from two thousand and seven. Did you see that? They were asking for what what had happened in your county or something?
Well, that what that was is that was something to legislature that they moved back in two thousand and seven to not create anymore, not create anymore recovery centers in the state of West Virginia.
Not, not, as I said.
To to put a hold on on doing anymore. What a backward way of thinking.
Well, see, that's, they've had those numbers, whether it's a state assisted living or whatever, on numbers based on, I don't know where they get the idea that you don't have, when your population is aging and they say you can no longer have nursing homes or assisted living, which is really backwards because your population's gone. And in a lot of these counties down in the state, if it wasn't for the nursing homes, there'd be no jobs at all.
Yeah, well, we don't have mental health anymore either, you know? We don't have places to to for people to live that really can't live in society on their own. And so we put those. We put those people in jail or or on the streets or. What a shame, what a shame. I don't think Berkeley County would do that if it was our decision to create those rules because, like I said yesterday, we Berkeley County really is like an old school, you know, the old time village that takes care of all of its people and looks for ways to better everybody's life in in our community.
Well, the rescue mission's getting ready to to expand into family facilities. And of course, they ended up being the catchall for all the mental health issues. And the new gentleman's there has been doing a bang up job trying to, well, he's got over sixty some, sixty employees, which up to previously, we couldn't, they didn't, the statement was that our our men don't work, won't work outside the facility. And so the change of of direction has been real plus because they even had, would be Stephanie Stow's group, and it was kept not into counseling. So it's been another one of the errors in our.
It looks like we have about a half, thank you, Tim. Looks like we have about a half hour left on our schedule here. Do we want?
I'd say we want to just.
All right. Daryl. Good morning.
How you like your job? I'm I'm enjoying it. I'm I'm finding out those things that I don't know that I don't know so far. So many of its work or states. Before I begin, greetings from your elections division. The voter registration staff ask me if you convey their gratitude to your support of the county staff, not just in spirit, but in the actions you take. West Virginia code sets the number of, minimum number of pool workers per precinct during election. Set at five per precinct, two pool clerks, two ballot commissioners, and and one additional ballot commissioner who can act with spare. That's a minimum number. The code gives the authority to the council to set a number above that. It's recommendation, the elections division, that the council set the number of workers per precinct at five. That's the state minimum. That will be five workers per sixty, for each of the sixty-six precincts. There's a pool of alternates also available. That pool can be as as large as you like. Looking at staffing the previous elections and some uncertainties that were placed this year because of health concerns, we'd recommend having a pool of forty alternate pool workers who are available to report to work the morning of the election should be needed. Those pool workers would undergo training. And if they were called to serve on election day, they would be paid for the training at election day. And if they were called to serve on election day, they would be paid for the training at election day.
So they get paid for the training if they don't get pulled in on election day?
If they're, the code says they either have to work on election day or they have to be available to work on election day. With the intention of the election department, consistent with budget constraints, have as large a pool as possible specifically to work both to voter registration downstairs and scattered precincts around the county where there are more than one precinct that's polling place. Because we do have about a ten percent attrition rate on the morning of the election. So we won't plan for conventions. Code allows an emergency for a polling place to operate, precinct to operate, with helping the poor people in an emergency. In the primary of this year, Secretary of State and Attorney General and the governor allow us to operate with a minimum of three if necessary. Tell you that you cannot in a timely fashion operate a precinct with just three people. Requires a minimum of four. That's why we're recommending training and deployment of as many alternates as budgetable.
You know, I am surprised that there hasn't been some form of legislation written like jury duty.
Don't get me started, man. I just finished jury duty like six months ago, and I got another thing. I got another thing the other day that they want me to do jury duty. I'm like, what? What, I gotta go two times a year or something? What's that?
That's to get your soul open minded.
You know, especially like for civics class in high school and those students of voting age could partake in something, learn a little bit more about how important it is to vote.
I have four and a half months left on this job. And after that, I don't think I'm going to be allowed to do it during this process. But after this is over, you write my name down there. You can let me know the next time around. I'd be interested in getting involved.
You were committed, sir. Thank you.
And then also, going along with Jim, there's leadership classes that are at the high school, most of which are eighteen. That would be something that maybe as a.
A poll.
Going into the public relations, going to those particular schools and talk to those kids, you might end up picking up some kids there that's real.
Shows interest.
And see, that'll go along with Mark Warner's getting people to sign up to vote.
Mark Warner.
Excuse me, Max, sorry. Mark Warner's project of getting young folks to vote, that this way you get them to really get hands-on.
We are very actively seeking alternates. We have a pool right now of about three hundred and eighty individuals to fill. It's approximately three hundred and sixty jobs. And we expect that pool, we're adding two to three each day. Next steps for council and for the elections division. Once you approve the number of polling election workers, we notify the chairman or the Democratic and Republican parties. They make nominations to us. We fill from their nominations and from others that are their nominations. And they can nominate, each party can nominate up to sixty-six poll clerk, sixty-six ballot commissioners, and sixty-six alternates, and we'll work from that list. The code says that the council shall notify the party chairman, the elections division. You'll do it on your behalf with your authorization. There's also a code section that says I will come back to you by the end of the first week in September. And this will be the number of absentee ballot commissioners, but we can do that earlier. Elections division would recommend that it does make four emergency ballot commissioners for this election, which are the folks that we fill out to local hospitals on election day if there's a last minute application. So that's before you're today. I will be back the week of September tenth. But the list of nominations for poll workers for your approval could also give that authority to you. So you will appoint those poll workers that you wish to appoint on September tenth, and then we'll take care of it.
So you're looking for a motion for a number of, and your recommendation for the number is?
So the recommendation is for each of the sixty-six precincts in the county, there shall be two poll clerks of opposing political parties, two ballot, two election commissioners of opposing political parties, one additional election commissioner of any political party. There shall be a pool of alternate poll workers of unlimited size, but up to forty of those will be available to work on election day. If that's necessary. And there shall be four emergency absentee ballot commissioners.
Is this, and you have runners and things like that. This is not counting those things.
Correct. So we have, pre-election, we have eight volunteers that prepare the machines, get them set out, set up, make sure all the supplies are ready, help loading the cars with the election commissioners. We have teams of runners. In the primary election, we had six people who would run from precinct to precinct to deliver supplies if necessary. We have people on election night that unload the machines, assist in gathering that. Those individuals do not have to be trained as poll workers. All of these individuals must be trained as poll workers.
So I guess what we're looking for is a motion to approve the recommendation?
Yes. Make a motion that would accept the recommendation, Daryl Childs, to deputy department of voters registration.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
It's easy enough.
While you're here, you just want to briefly brief the council on the new piece of equipment that we're ordering. And what it does.
In the primary election, there were a lot of audibles called at the state level. And one of those audibles was expanding the pool of political actors.
So then, what'd you say, and then Ken said what?
Expanding the criteria for individuals who qualify for absentee ballots, according by absentee. As a result, thirteen thousand absentee ballots were mailed to voters who requested them primary. Eleven and a half thousand of those absentee ballots were cast. And the county did not have equipments, equipment over the ballots prepared in the way which would allow us to count those by optical scan. Meaning that we had to hire a number of poll workers to recreate each paper ballot that was passed absentee.
Into the machine.
Into the machine. Time-consuming process upon eleven and a half thousand cast votes prone to, not from the possibility of human error that entered into those entries. We have ordered, upon approval of the county clerk, a ballot scanner. Total cost is approximately fifty-two hundred dollars, half of which will apply for the American Vote Act grant, which will take for half of that. We don't know if that's going to prove the other number. That ballot scanner is compatible with our election night reporting systems and our election resource management systems, so that we'll be able to scan those ballots.
The same as the others?
Well, the other ballots are cast away from the.
Yeah, but they're the same.
Yeah, and it will go on to the same flash card, the same PEDs that we use in the other machines right by the machine. Estimate that the ballots we receive, ten percent of them may not be scanned. Orders are folded and marked as. They may end up hand-entering approximately ten percent of those ballots. Rather hand-enter one thousand than ten thousand. So that machine is on order. We are coordinating the delivery and installation of that machine so that it's done by someone who can train additional staff within voter registration as well as the county IP staff on how to program the machine, how to program the voting machine, so that the tests will be done and seeing those rules more efficiently and not have to rely on one exact person.
And we're hopeful that we'll get some grant money to offset some of the costs. But even if we don't, you know, five thousand dollars or five thousand and change is a small price to pay to know, you know, to improve the accuracy.
Keep the integrity.
It's going to reduce our personnel cost. Eventually, it's going to pay for itself. So, you know, Dan and I have talked about the advantages of bringing in, you know, fresh perspective, fresh set of eyes. Well, right there is an example. You know, I purposely stayed out of Daryl's way, but a couple times I've talked to him. Last time I talked to him, I said, how's it going? He says, making lemonade daily. So I know he's had his hands full, but already starting to, you know, to show the benefit of a fresh set of eyes for someone who's been intimately involved in the process at a state level, so.
It's going to be, it's going to be really interesting to see how much fraud happens with all this mail-in ballot stuff that we're talking about. That's part of the conversation right now. I, interesting enough, my campaign that I went through, I probably received twenty, twenty-five percent of my mailers back. Half of those ones I received back were not metered over the stamps, that they hadn't even been metered through anything. So wonders, you wonder if they ever went out. And they're marked unreturnable or undeliverable address. Whereas some of them, I know a hundred percent they were deliverable addresses, but yet they didn't go where they were supposed to. So you're still at the human error part you're talking about when you do postal. You know, and it's multiple human error. It goes through many hands in order to get to where it needs to go. And then it has to do the reverse and come back. So, yeah, there's, and we've seen where in West Virginia, not too long ago, there was a postman that was in charge with fraud, where he was voting the ballots himself, apparently. You know? So it'll be interesting to see how this election turns out. But anything you can do to make it better, I think, is definitely in the right direction.
I'm going to give you a quick briefing on the steps we're taking specifically related to postal delivery. We're working very closely with postal service globally and various places and various departments across the country. We're making two significant changes to how we're sending and receiving ballots in post office. First is outgoing, that's where we, after individuals apply for ballot or approve for absentee ballot, we'll be September eighteenth, we send them their ballot, instructions, privacy envelope, return envelope, which by law we have to postage on. And that's all stuffed into a larger envelope. In the primary election, because of time constraints, those outgoing envelopes each individually metered and sent, we are applying for and fixing first-class prepaid postage, which will significantly reduce the amount of postage per piece that we send on the airport. On the return ballot, we are also fixing postage to that, in some cases metered, in some cases stamps. Post office, while they are legally obligated to place postmark dates on election mail, that didn't happen in all cases. And so if we received a ballot three days after the election but before campus, we are not legally allowed to count that ballot. We are correcting that by fixing first-class postage to every outgoing piece. That means no additional steps, hand-stamps are necessary to prepare them. In addition, on that return piece we get from the voter, we're opening to post office, we're applying some specific barcodes to those pieces, specific facing information on those pieces. Pre-printing through a printer, all of the rest information that you can. There's a slight cost involved in that, but by doing that, it allows us to have a audit mechanism at post office. How many were received, how many were delivered, and then we can keep track of that. Now, we also have the postage savings in that process. Overall, we'll be saving approximately one dollar per absentee ballot postage. It depends on the number of ballot applications you receive.
And adds up.
Ten thousand as a dollar a piece. We're looking at other ways, poll costs, and improve efficiency.
I can see the future, I can see the future of more secure method of emailing and that type of thing happening in the future.
It's in place on military votes, emergency votes, and our secretary of state is. We did an open, severe rate.
Anything else for Daryl?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. He's already had a significant impact on processes.
There's no doubt.
The next thing you have to look at is advertisement.
We got that. We got it.
We got it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Just two things for the council's information more than anything. The first is Sportsman's Paradise. With the council's approval, we continue to make purchases of available property down at Sportsman's Paradise. Again, working towards the goal to get as many contiguous parcels as we can. To date, with what we have now settled, we have slightly over thirty-five acres at Sportsman's. Our most recent possession is a single-family dwelling located at sixty-seven Vinegar Court. The tenants that were in that property, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, have completely moved out. They had an out, building, a little storage, said that we gave them a couple extra days to get off the property. But they are now, they have now vacated the property. I've given you pictures of sixty-seven Vinegar Court, which is part of an appraisal that we had done several months ago as we were negotiating the purchase of the property. We have received some complaints, some calls from some of the private property owners down at Sportsman's Paradise of continued illegal dumping, campaign, and ATV use. Within the past month, we had two facilities employees, along with a number of community service participants, spent a full week down at Sportsman's cleaning it up. And I don't know how many dump trailers full of debris they haul out of there, concrete shingles, a lot of other things. Jack Lang and his staff are doing their best to police the area. They go down several times a week, but just since the cleanup, someone's gone down and dumped a whole bunch of roof shingles, which now have to be cleaned up. One of the things I'm asking the council to consider is allowing our facilities department to go in to sixty-seven Vinegar Court, do some cosmetic things. It just needs to be freshened up a little bit. I know a number of the local storage facilities actually have small apartments attached to them, and they encourage law enforcement personnel to rent. And they give it to them every reduced rent or maybe even free of charge if they pay utilities. I don't know what the arrangement is. But I think it would be beneficial for us to put a caretaker down at Sportsman's Paradise. It would be nice if we could get law enforcement. I did have Mike Lang check. We have three new West Virginia state policemen being assigned to the Martinsburg area in September. So they will be relocating to this area. Would like to have a caretaker down at Sportsman's. I don't need to assure that the properties that we have down there that still have structures on them aren't cannibalized, that they are conditioning and the copper and the electricals moved out. But also to make sure that we don't have ATVs running amok and we don't have illegal dumping going on. Just wanted to bring that to the council to see what your thoughts on that might be.
Well, we have a caretaker at Forehouse that stays at the place. And I'll be honest with you, as large as that place is, you know, it's been a real godsend to have someone that's a go-getter and really responsible for different things.
Well, Mr. Foster, who I think you've all had contact with, who lives down there, who has the veterans area down there, he does what he can to police, but certainly that's not his responsibility. And since we do own so much property down there, I think that would be to our benefit.
Yeah, I think the concept is a great idea. I can see where he may have difficulty. I would think that creating a partnership with law enforcement may give you more interested parties than you have a spot for. And then you need to, you know, vet that and try to decide who you're going to work with. But I think it's a great idea to be able to do something, to create a partnership with someone from law enforcement, to be able to keep an eye on it, not that it's going to stop it. I don't know, and I hear the ATV thing, I don't know that the ATV thing is the problem. I think it's who's on the ATV. I think the guy that's down there that rents out some properties, I think he moves around some on a golf cart down there, those type of things. You know, most of the retirement communities for elderly have golf carts and ATVs in them so they can move around. So. So I, I think it's more of the four-wheelers that are ripping and tearing and those type of things that you have to, that you have to stop. But I think it's a good, in my opinion, I think it's a, a great idea to have somebody down there to protect the interest. But also with all the additional rubbish that you have to deal with right now because people dumping. I think it also brings to the forefront the importance of finding a purpose for this and doing something with this property.
Right. So consensus of the council is for me to look into.
Pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing is just an update on our twenty-twenty lease revenue increase improvement and refinancing bonds. We actually are scheduled to go to closing next Wednesday, August the twenty-sixth at one-thirty PM, and then they will be put out for sale the following day. Last week during the meeting, we were able to, to lock the interest rate. We were, we, the interest rate, the true interest rate was locked at two point oh six nine percent, which was just slightly more than two percent. The loan that we had with Summit Bank, which was a slightly less than four point two million dollars, which we will be refinancing and paying off next week, was at three point two nine percent. So not only are we able to borrow the money that we need for the improvements to five-twenty South Raleigh Street at two point oh six nine percent, we are refinancing about four point one million dollars that, that would use for the Chemco property. And we will be saving four hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-five cents in interest. So just less, slightly less than five million dollars for your refunding effort. So again, that's significant.
I'd be interested to know what the additional cost and the new, what the interest, what the interest is going to be, even when you add on the additional cost of lower percentage rate, because you're almost, you're, you're probably almost getting close to paying the same interest that you were paying.
I think that the payments are going to, by rough calculations, it's going to be pretty much a net zero change.
Yeah, yeah. So you, so you, you're, you're getting a bunch, enough money to finish that building and we're not paying no more interest than we were paying before. You know, just the principle is, is the difference on it. So I, I, I mean, to me, that's, that's like nothing. If you're not going, if you're not going up or, you know, but great, that is great news.
Just wanted to let the council know again, Greg Isaac said last Thursday that once again, the council's timing was perfect. It was just spot on. Met with, I will be meeting with the three contractors at noon today. But two weeks ago, when I met with them and we'd be on site, they still feel that they could, they could have the project wrapped up by the first or second week in November. Their goal was to be out of here by Thanksgiving.
Well, I'd like to see it happen before I leave council.
Well, it, it very well may.
Once again, on you, it's good to be lucky.
That's what I said, lady luck. If you've got vision, lady luck is nearby, but if you don't, you never see her.
Got to make moves, that's for sure. Okay.
That's all I have there.
That's all we have. Anybody else have anything they want to run by here? We good?
Other than an experience I had yesterday coming home, I was on eighty-one North, south of Winchester. Rear tire blew out and was able to manage to get to the side of the interstate, eighty-one. And within minutes, VDOT safety vehicle was behind me setting out cones.
In Virginia.
In Virginia.
Good thing it didn't happen in.
And I'd like to publicly thank, his name is Phil Baker, who was a driver of that truck, who came to my assistance and I did need him, so.
Old guy, white hair, probably figured he'd help this guy out.
Yeah, he was, he was struggling, yeah.
This guy may be struggling, might have turned a jack for him or something.
Well, he had, he had a floor jack, because mine, where it was sitting on the edge of the road, mine wasn't worked that came with the vehicle. So he had a floor jack. He also had a battery-operated impact wrench, because I could not get the lug nuts loose on my tire. So what took probably a, a two and a half hour tire change, about twenty minutes. So thanks to VDOT.
Yeah, I'm sure you got him on speed dial now, right?
I hope I never have to call him again, but, but yeah, I, I'll remember him very well.
Good, good. Mr. Barnhart? We have items from the public?
Do we?
I don't look like.
I guess not, not much public here, so I'll move to recess.
Move to recess. Thank you. We are recessed.
Hey, Matt, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm down meeting with Joshua Bowers.